As the Mayor for the Town of Clayton, I'd like to call this Town Council regular meeting to order. I ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we pause to give you thanks for the many blessings of this day, and we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the Town of Clayton, for it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. A couple minor adjustments. Under Item Six, we would like to swap Items B and D. So the second item would actually be the Town of Clayton Strategic Plan, and the last item in that section would be the UDO text amendments. And then we'd also like to add, under the closed session, a legal reference, or excuse me, a reference for discussion of a legal matter, which would be 143-318.11A3.
Okay, I got those noted on the agenda. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is your consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Up next, under administrative item, is the Clayton For You.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, tonight we bring to you another episode of Clayton For You. Tonight's episode is Building Inspections versus Home Inspections, and what's the difference?
In this episode of Clayton For You, we're clearing up misconceptions about the role of a home inspector versus a building inspector. The key difference: Home inspectors aim to inform buyers about the condition of a property, while building inspectors ensure that all construction elements are safe and meet current legal standards. To break it down further, a home inspector evaluates major systems like electrical, plumbing, HVAC, roofing, and foundations, checks for defects, safety hazards, and maintenance issues, and provides detailed reports on the home's condition and necessary repairs.
The Town of Clayton does not conduct home inspection. Private businesses handle these inspections, usually during home buying or selling, to identify any potential issues. On the other hand, building inspectors focus on structural integrity, safety, and code compliance. They view these plans before construction begins, inspect the critical stages of construction to ensure they meet building codes, and have the authority to issue citations and stop work orders.
We're grateful for the town's inspections department and the instrumental role that they play in keeping our community safe. Thanks for watching, and be sure to inspect our social media to keep up with Clayton For You and other town updates.
That was great. Mr. Attorney.
Mayor, we just need to recognize the council member participating remotely for the record. Make sure she can hear and be heard.
Okay. So we have Councilmember Ruth Anderson that is joining us remotely, and Ruth, we need to make sure you can hear us.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, under Special Introductions and Presentations, is the National Finance and Accounting Appreciation Week proclamation. Town of Clayton proclamation, Finance and Accounting Appreciation Week. Whereas the Town of Clayton honors the finance and accounting department professionals as they serve their organization by managing day-to-day accounting operations and balancing the budget, both of which are needed for citizens to have faith and trust in their government. And whereas the finance and accounting department professionals are accredited professionals who provide financial transparency to citizens through timely publications of official, of financial statements to meet the highest standards of governmental accounting. And whereas this is, the Town of Clayton recognizes the finance and accounting department during this week and honors the vital services they provide to our town and to our community. And now therefore, on behalf of the Clayton Town Council, we hereby proclaim September 23rd through 27th, 2024, Finance and Accounting Appreciation Week, and encourage all citizens to extend their appreciation to all government finance professionals proclaimed this 16th day of September, 2024. We are so appreciative for the fine job that you all do for the Town of Clayton, and we applaud you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Smile big, everybody. Yes, sir. All right. Couple more. Big cheese. Perfect. All right. Thank you, guys.
Also, the city would like to present to Town of Clayton, the Government Finance Association. This is the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, presented to Town of Clayton, North Carolina, for its annual comprehensive financial report for this year and in January of 2012. So to our, to our chief of finance, and to this team. Thank you all so much. Congratulations on your, your challenge.
Good evening. Town of Clayton National Custodian Day proclamation. Whereas each year on October the 2nd, the National Custodian Day is observed, and whereas custodians are the unsung heroes of our offices and many other commercial facilities, and whereas custodians are willing to learn and adapt to new technologies to make our facilities better for years to come, and whereas they are hardworking individuals who dedicate countless hours to providing a clean and safe environment for our staff and community who occupy those buildings, and whereas we are proud to recognize our custodians and recognize the hard work that it takes to keep our public facilities in tip-top shape and diligently work tirelessly to make sure our workplaces are spotless and sanitary. And whereas, it is the Town of Clayton's commitment that every custodian is shown appreciation and thanks for all they do and for our buildings and facilities. Now therefore, on behalf of the Clayton Town Council, we hereby proclaim October the 2nd, 2024, National Custodian Day, proclaim this the 16th day of September, 2024. Jody L. McLeod, Mayor.
Yeah, they switched. And up next will be the Human Resource Professionals Day proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town of Clayton proclamation, Human Resource Professional Day. Whereas the Town of Clayton honors the Office of Human Resources for the important work that they do to support all town employees, and whereas human resource professionals help employees adapt to an ever-changing and competitive environment while responding to workplace needs and economic challenges, and whereas these professionals enable positive organizational development and serve as strategic partners to meet public service goals by recruiting and retaining qualified diverse candidates for employment, developing equitable compensation and benefit structures, and preserving the integrity of the organization by ensuring compliance with state and federal laws. And whereas the Town of Clayton Human Resources Professionals serve as leaders, business strategists, problem solvers, talent developers, and advocates while displaying integrity and dedication. And whereas Human Resource Professional Day is an opportunity to show appreciation for human resource professionals and the valuable work that they do every day. Now therefore, on behalf of the Clayton Town Council, we hereby proclaim September 26th, 2024, as Human Resource Professional Day, proclaim this 16th day of September, 2024.
Let's have a nice round of applause for our good folks at HR. And up next is the National IT Professional Day proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town of Clayton proclamation, National IT Professionals Day. Whereas National IT Professional Day was created in 2015 and celebrated the third Tuesday of September each year, and whereas it is with acknowledgement and appreciation of the technical expertise, network engineers, system administrators, database administrators, business systems analysts, GIS analysts, and service desk technicians who ensure our networks, applications, tools, technology, and information are kept secure, ensuring technical process, systems, and devices operate smoothly. And whereas the Town of Clayton supports the skilled work of IT professionals to strengthen community communications and resilience, connect people with the technology and each other, and provide and promote opportunities for healthy living equity and sustainability. And whereas National IT Professionals Day recognizes the importance and benefits of IT professionals as an integrity role, enriching the lives of our community members and securing a desirable place to live, work, play, and visit. And whereas the most important part of this day is taking the time to thank the IT professionals who make modern day life easier for all of us. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Town of Clayton, we hereby proclaim September 17th, 2024, as National IT Professional Day, proclaim this 16th day of September, 2024. Signed, Jody McLeod, Mayor.
Let's have a nice round of applause for all our good employees in IT. Thank you. Up next, under Public Hearings, is the 2023-202 ANX NCRR Industrial Development.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This is the request for an annexation of property that is located just on the corner of 70 and NC42. About 72 acres in size. It is contiguous to the town, and it's currently the ETJ. It's worth noting that there's been some resolutions that you all have been doing to get us prepared for the, for the meeting tonight, for the public hearing. And it's also worth noting that there is a subsequent TRC review of a site plan for this development, but that's not part of this request. So again, for the, let's see if this works. Yes, it does. Okay, so here's the property right here. It comes out to Front Street. Where's Front Street, right there? And then you have 70 and 42. So it's on the corner right there. This is the Sheet Gas Station and the area where the new Aldi is gonna be coming in. Again, a better, better resolution here. There's Front Street, NC42, and this whole property. You can see some of the tree clearing that is occurring on the site right now. Current zoning is heavy industrial. It's not being changed right now. Feature land use map has it as employment center. There's no request for that to be changed either. And that concludes my presentation. Very brief. It's just a simple annexation request. And the applicant is here. If there's any questions for them as well.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments for staff or others?
You said it was industrial, right?
Yes, sir. It's a heavy industrial zoning district. All right. Anyone else? If not, then I will thank you for your presentation, and I will entertain a motion. Ms. Archer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say for my part that this makes complete sense for the Town of Clayton. I'm grateful to the applicant for their desire to join us, and hopefully here in a moment, we are welcoming you to the Town of Clayton. But barring any other commentary from the rest of council, I would like to go ahead and make a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-09-01.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the adoption of ordinance 2024-09-01. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Up next is the UDO amendments, UDO TA 2-24.
Mr. Mayor, we had asked.
Oh, I'm sorry. We did. My bad. That's gonna be Item D. Yes, so the next item will be items on the schedule, on the agenda, Item 6D, which is Town of Clayton Strategic Plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have the pleasure to take before you the proposed adoption that we are seeking this evening for our new Town of Clayton Strategic Plan. Our strategic planning process began in November of 2023, where we began to seek input for consultant firms to engage us and help to plan for the next three to five years. In December, we engaged with Raftellus Consulting to begin taking us through their planning services, and we began to, begin to get a framework for what was going to be the understanding of our context of what it would take to get us to the finish line of our strategic planning process. In January and February of this year, we began to engage our stakeholders in various formats such as public engagement input surveys, strategic planning focus groups, an internal survey of our Town of Clayton staff, and as well as an open-ended survey on our website. And through this information, beginning in March, we began to gather input and finalize what would be our strategic framework. In May, we began to take our process through alignment, measurement, and strategy development, and we began this year in July coming up with our final deliverable, which was presented to you during our work session and will, pending your approval, be transparently put on our website for all of our residents to see. One important part of this process has also been your involvement in setting the framework and setting what were your priorities as well. There were major activities throughout this entire process, such as data review, employee and public surveys, your visioning workshops that we had in February. The town had many opportunities where our staff was involved in strategic planning sessions for their input based upon these areas of focus that you all identified as our council members. And then, as we stated before, stakeholder engagement focus group meetings, and then several implementation workshops to take these identified strategies and begin to include key performance indicators to each one of those to help us begin to get success over the next three to five years. We also received as a part of the deliverables from Raftellus, a town environmental scan, and we also received an actual deliverable document, which is our Town of Clayton Strategic Plan. Internally, as a, as a staff and working with our town manager and administration and you all, we will be developing a dashboard that will be an internal and external reporting mechanism for us. With this dashboard, we will be able to provide you with updates annually, and then at different times quarterly, you'll be able to see the progress on each one of our goals and strategies, and that will also be housed on our website as well, and used as a way to help gauge our process all along the way. So we're excited about that. Our own internal IT department is working with developing that dashboard and using all of the extremely talented people that we have right here in the Town of Clayton to achieve this. This is our strategic plan framework, and this is what we will be operating off of for the next three to five years. As you can see through all of the input, we have an updated vision, organizational mission, as well as our values. Our key focus areas are our vibrant downtown, desirable amenities and spaces, sustainable infrastructure, mobility, transportation, and transit, diversified economic development, community outreach and engagement, and public safety. All of these we worked through back in February, and then they were further supported with our town staff and also with our community. We then began to go into a deeper dive, looking at our strategies that we believe will be attainable over the next three to five years. We also, I'll go ahead and open up our actual plan so you can see what the document is going to look like. Oh, he's getting that ready for us. Our actual deliverable document that will be on our website is also in a printed copy as well. And in this, it has a summary of all of the information that I presented to you tonight. Our strategic planning process, the timeline that we have followed, all of the identified strategies, and we'll also have information about where we are currently in our current state in the Town of Clayton. So we're very excited about this document. We feel like this is a living document, one in which is extremely attainable for our town, and that has had several thoughtful processes attached to it. One thing I'm very excited to announce in the document is one of our charts that actually says how much alignment there was between what our public says to the framework, identified focus areas that you all said that we needed to be focused on, and there was high alignment between those. This is actually the look of the document that I'm speaking of, and as you go through that, it is just a very clear look for all of our What will our next steps be? And if okay with you, we can just go on the next steps. Sorry about that. I don't want to take up all their time. So what will be our next steps? Our next steps will be taking a look at all of the items that we have. Let's skip through this real quickly. Our adoption this evening is our beginning of our rollout phase. Our executive team is reviewing all of these documents for KPIs and alignment now. We are also working with each of our departments to create operational plans to bring these strategies. to create operational plans to bring these strategies to life. That is also occurring now and will continue into the month of October. And they will also continue to meet with us monthly for priority work group sessions. And they will be trained on the dashboard that we are developing in December. We will also begin to formally implement these strategies at the end, at the beginning of quarter two. And these will be readjusted and aligned as new strategies develop for each of the departments, each one of our years that we have during the life of the plan. So I will entertain any questions or anything that I may have left out.
Any questions or comments for staff? Ms. Archer.
Thank you to staff and council. I know a lot of work went into this document. And I know we have talked about it as being the master plan of all of our plans. And I just think that as we continue to grow as a town and mature and get bigger and smarter, that this will become really key. And so I think the clearer we are about where we want to go, the more efficiently we can get there. And I think you guys have done a fantastic job doing that through this plan. So thank you.
Thank you.
I would agree. And I would also commend, excuse me, the council for having the fortitude to see that, you know, historically in the Town of Clayton, a strategic plan has been a 10-year plan. And now with the way times are, three to five years is a better short-term strategic plan growth for the Town of Clayton. So kudos to the town council for being visionary enough to realize that this is a three-to-five-year plan. So this has been noted as a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. Yes, yes. All right, so no one else wishing to speak? I'll turn it, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-09-04.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of ordinance 2024-09-04. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next public hearing is the Town of Clayton Downtown Plan.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Conrad O'Malley, Planning Director. I'm very happy to be providing you with a downtown plan for the Town of Clayton. Very excited here. We have our consultant, Mr. Dan Lambert, who is with McAdams LLC. They've been working on this plan for a couple of months, if not at least over a year. There's been a significant amount of public engagement. There's been discussions with the Downtown Development Advisory Board, the Planning Board, with council at the work sessions. And we're very happy to provide this version of the downtown master, of the downtown plan for consideration to be adopted as one of our future growth plans here for the Town of Clayton. So Mr. Dan Lambert will provide you with the presentation and will be available after forty questions y'all may have.
Thanks, Conrad. Thank you, members of council, Mr. Mayor, for being here this evening. I know that you've heard a lot about this over the last couple of years, all the way back from early data gathering in 2022, where I interviewed a number of you to kind of get early vision ideas. And all the way from there, through a few staff changes, a few handoffs along the way. And here we are, at last, with the final draft for your consideration this evening. The, pardon me, it's the wrong direction already. Miss step number one. The plan process, you've seen this graphic a few times. We're finally at the very last dot along the timeline after having gathered information in that early set of sessions that I mentioned through public engagement and all along the way through the participatory boards and through your other planning efforts that mentioned just now within the strategic plan of it kind of being the housing for all these other plans that you've recently done. That information highly informed this process as well. So the comprehensive plan, transportation plan, bike and ped plan, all of the above have contributed to this downtown plan. And in turn, we have informed them as well. So the downtown plan itself, it has a couple of items that are new to the general public here in terms of the land use within the central downtown core. Y'all are familiar with it at this point. The two new districts that we've added are the historic downtown core district and the downtown development district. We've expanded the downtown core significantly to the west. The two colors, as you see in the middle of this, surrounded by a blue outline, refer to that downtown core. And the downtown boundary for the area that, of the study is in yellow. Future land use plan, this comes as a variation on what is in the comprehensive land use plan with some of the adaptations that we came to as a result of our planning process, including those two new categories, which you'll see kind of that magenta color. That's the historic downtown core. And that burgundy color is the downtown development district, the two of which I'll describe a little bit further here. And before we get too far into that, one second. I feel like we're missing some slides in here. All right, well, hopefully, they're just out of order. This plan itself is a visionary document. This is a guiding document. This is not intended to be the governing text, much like a UDO is. So just for the sake of trying to determine what the form and the general outlook for downtown will be, was the intention of this plan. And that was all based on, hold on a second, I'm going to read our vision that we came to. There's a vision statement that we came to as a part of this process, that downtown Clayton is our place. It's where we make memories, share our cultures, and dare to be creative. It's where we celebrate our history and where we find opportunity to grow together. It's based on four community values: enriching the quality of life and creating memorable experiences, celebrating culture and creativity, preserving and celebrating historic resources, and enhancing the local economy. So the concepts that you'll see tonight within this plan are all in those aims. Their attempt is to get the town pointed in that direction as it grows and to give the framework for which the actual policies that develop over that next 10 to 15 years will turn this vision into a reality. So within that future land use map, I mentioned that the downtown core area expanded and that there are two new designations: historic downtown core, downtown development district. The historic downtown core is the central focus and the heart of Clayton as we know it today. The intention of this district is to preserve the historic small-town character of downtown Clayton through the addition of protective language to the UDO for existing properties of historic significance and the establishment of architectural guidelines for new development and redevelopment within the district. So this is primarily based on preserving the small-town character that everybody associates with downtown Clayton. And again, that's the area within that magenta color in the center. The downtown development district, it's the remainder of that expanded downtown core outside the historic downtown core district. The intention of this district is to concentrate density and new development within downtown to minimize the gentrification impact on surrounding neighborhoods. Also, just as with the historic downtown core, establishment of architectural guidelines helps to keep the character of downtown Clayton intact while adapting to future growth pressures. So to clarify a little bit, the form that that creates is with more preservation happening within that magenta color in the middle, it tends to lead to smaller, lower, in terms of vertical height, development. And the burgundy areas tend to be higher density, which allows for slightly taller development in that vicinity to allow for the density that will be coming here. So it kind of creates what we have been calling a concave shape, where it's tall on the outside and a little bit smaller on the inside. The zoning map is going to have to change to meet the same new districts. Traffic, transportation, and parking recommendations. A lot of these are in line with the elements you've seen within the transportation plan. So I'm not going to talk about every individual one, but a lot of this on this first page in the near-term solutions include some traffic improvements on Main Street, including turn lanes. A point of emphasis, better maintain pedestrian focus. Do not widen streets within downtown Clayton is one of our strong recommendations. Reducing the speed limit to 25 on the western side of Main Street from Stallings to Robertson and incorporating a four-way stop at Main and Moore. More of the near-term recommendations for traffic, transportation, and parking. Closing the railroad crossing at Church Street. Doing a study for the best possible location for a commuter rail station in the future, if that comes this way. Continuing to pursue BRT, bus rapid transit opportunities on US 70 business, as well as bike and ped connectivity to downtown. And to perform a formal parking study using the projections that are derived from this plan within its land use and development patterns to try to start to figure out what we're going to need when and where. One of the very first things that we've recommended is the top of the list here, establishing an agreement with the railroad to allow First Street and Front Street parking and pedestrian improvements. And then to design and construct those improvements. So those two things are high on the list, a priority, to make sure that we've guaranteed a good parking solution for the core of downtown. Also, to contract a need and feasibility study for surface and structure parking to identify possible sites, triggers for development of each, and cost factors for implementing each. So it's the early study to determine when and where it would be necessary to create additional parking as more folks move to downtown Clayton. And to add a funding line item to the budget in the capital improvements plan to begin accruing funds to account for this. These here are primarily physical changes to the road that are midterm solutions. So these are things to save money for today, to do in a few years' time. Adding turn lanes on Main at Robertson, a turn lane, left turn lane on Main at Smith. And then, one of the bigger ones, realigning Stallings Street to north of the railroad corridor, closing the crossing at Stallings. So rather than having the odd S-shaped curve that brings it back to Main, it would continue onward and meet past the overpass. And then establish a three-route network of microtransit, including the green route, the gold route, and the pink route. Also midterm acquiring property for implementation of some of the recommended long-term parking solution based on the need and feasibility study. So you'll see the color fading at the top there. That's intentional. That's to kind of show that this is getting farther and farther in the future. The timeframes that we talk about, near-term, midterm, long-term, tend to be zero to five years for the near-term, six to 10 for the midterm, and plus for long-term. So these traffic, transportation, parking recommendations for the long-term are to develop Main Street into more of a complete street. So that includes multimodal transportation options. That includes better pedestrian facilities, et cetera. Acquiring property for implementation of long-term parking. So that continues from the midterm to the long-term. Property acquisition, as you all know, as a municipal entity, tends to be a process. Needs to start early and continue over time. And then ultimately, to design and construct the preferred parking solution, whether that be surface lots or structures in the future. We're going to move to bike and ped improvements. The near-term for those, several of these, you'll see it come from the 2022 Clayton pedestrian plan directly. So these are kind of prioritized in order of when those should happen, as well as some of the others that came out of our process. Install pedestrian signal heads at signalized intersections. Provide adequate pedestrian crossing time. So definitely items to improve pedestrian safety were a priority. Main Street pedestrian improvements from more to central. So that's generally the majority of the run of Main Street through downtown. East Coast Greenway completion. So there is a study that has been done to show where that should happen. Within our process, we've identified some locations that make sense adjacent to the rail corridor to connect east to west, the East Coast Greenway. And then improve signage identifying parking at the Clayton Center and the route to Main Street. So kind of helping people know where the parking is versus where the events tend to be. Also, near-term, study, design, and construct, construct a grade-separated pedestrian rail crossing, including a greenway tunnel at Lombard Street to connect Main Street to the East Coast Greenway extension and create a designated rail crossing for greenway traffic. So that is the first place vertically where there is enough room to actually tunnel underneath the rail. And it also makes a lot of sense with the amount of activity that happens at Horn Square for events. From Campos, LAPP program, there are a couple of sidewalk construction elements that are also included in the near-term recommendations. The East Main Street Sidewalk Connector from Central to 70 Business. The Mountain to Sea Greenway Trail, also known as Cross Clayton Connector. There's a 900-foot-long sidewalk gap on Stallings from Crawford to McCullers. So closing that is priority and allows connection to Municipal Park. Implementing pedestrian guidance at signalized intersections. So that's a little bit different than the prior recommendation. That includes facilities for accessibility. And then implementing pedestrian traffic signal enhancements elsewhere on Main Street. Study for the Main Street corridor for potential to incorporate mid-block crossings under the NCDOT Action Plan is one of our strong recommendations. People tend to cross where they want to cross. It's better to have that controlled for the sake of preventing traffic and pedestrian conflicts. Better that we define where that happens than it just goes on as it does willy-nilly. All right, and then other downtown pedestrian improvements that are not Main Street-focused. Incorporate funding for sidewalk gap closures and crossing improvements system-wide. Establish a priority list of those improvements. And then seek alternative funding sources for on-street connections such as bike lanes or shared lane markings to area greenways. And ultimately, that should say Municipal Park as well. We recommend in the near-term that you form an active transportation advisory committee. So active transportation being a human-guided system. So bicycle, greenway, so joggers, cyclists, pedestrians. We tend to believe that their representation needs to meet the level of that of cars when you start to talk about downtown in the way that we have through this process. Part of that is becoming designated as a walk-friendly community. And then we recommend that you contract planning and design services for an integrated branding, signage, and wayfinding system to make it easier for folks to find their way. Erecting protective fencing along the rail corridor, along First Street and Front Street for the full length of the downtown corridor of the rail. Improving pedestrian facilities at the railroad crossings that remain open, including controlled access measures. And then contracting, planning and design surfaces for an integrated branding. Well, that's repeated essentially, but it's, one is for Main Street and one is for outside of Main Street. All right, so you'll see a little bit gray in this. That's because that particular recommendation, portions of this are going to happen midterm and portions of it should happen long-term. But generally, because this is pulled directly from the 2022 plan, we wanted the full text represented here. So the, within the midterm, we believe that you should construct the parking lane enhancement zone improvements, including curb extensions in the pavement width. So this is the bulbout at intersections that shorten the distance for crossing and that allow for additional traffic calming measures to occur. Design and construct sidewalks connecting First to Main between Fayetteville and Church and sidewalks connecting First to Main between Church and Horn. Going to pick it up a little, there's a few more to go here. On the midterm, improve pedestrian rail crossings at Robertson, O'Neill, and Central. Study, design, and construct pedestrian facility connections from Main at Robertson to the proposed greenway tunnel under the railroad. So this is essentially that greenway section that I mentioned earlier. So here's the other half of that going into long-term, that the parklets, bicyc- So here's the other half of that going into long-term, that the parklets, bicycle corrals, et cetera, that you saw in the pedestrian plan should be looked at being constructed in the long-term. That's the full streetscape improvements on Main is what that represents. And then design and construct sidewalks from Second to Main between Lombard and Smith. And consistent sidewalk access to your major attractions, and those that we have listed there are just a few that exist today, and Municipal Park got bumped off the bottom of the screen, I believe, it was in there, guarantee it. All right, implement parking lane enhancement zone concepts through downtown is another long-term one, and again, branding, signage, and wayfinding outside of Main Street. Downtown events and programming recommendations. The near-term ones are identifying location, adding funding for, and adding a line item to the budget for the public restroom, and a permanent pavilion structure for the farmer's market. So in addition to that, studying vendors from the current and prior farmer's markets and identifying gaps in offerings to customers, trying to create a broader range of offerings so that it can have a much more vibrant life and a longer life throughout the seasons. Study if downtown events involving performances can be moved to Municipal Park, or if a new stage should be constructed elsewhere. One of the conversations was the festivals, there's now a permanent bandshell stage at Municipal Park, and so this is kind of taking that additional step to say, should we move all of our staged events to Municipal, or is there reason to keep some of them within the downtown core itself and continue to use portable stage facilities? Identify available location for expanded concert series, including different venues at different scales, and work with other series such as Family Movie Night to fill empty slots in the schedule with regular functions. So the goal of this is to have some of those quality-of-life options, for lack of a better phrase, and to fill up a calendar as best as possible with things to do. Work with Cultural Arts Department and Clayton Center to book complimentary performance events, so things that might draw people from one to the other. Actively seek a variety of vendors, craftsmen, artisans, and artists to contract spaces at the farmer's market, so try to get some more local artisans involved in the farmer's market. And create a new position or empower an existing position to coordinate downtown events and their planning, so give somebody the authority to make all this stuff happen. For the midterm, identify that preferred location for that permanent pavilion structure for the market, contract, plan, design, and construct that pavilion structure, and then actively seek larger and more frequent events through targeted marketing campaigns. And then long-term is contracting to plan, design, and construct that public restroom. Infrastructure improvement recommendations, utilizing your recently finished stormwater analysis study, identify the capacity needed and the trigger points, much like we talked about with parking, you need to do the same thing with your utilities. Find those points at which enough people have moved here to justify expanding a system, and that'll be all of your utilities, so there's some repetition in here for water, wastewater, electricity, et cetera. And then establish a plan and funding for integrated utility network information to be created, populated and updated. This is your digital information, this is your GIS, really working on a system that has full information, so as you start to do projects in the future, there aren't any underground surprises for you along the way. Part of that is getting a process funded for identifying what you have in place and then incorporating those things that come online as you grow. And then one of the big ones in the long-term that would have a great impact on downtown, pursuing utility conversion from overhead to underground to alleviate visual clutter and reduce conflicts. UDO text is going to have to change a little to accommodate what we've mentioned, I'm not going to go through each section in this, but these all reside within the implementation matrix as well. It's talking about review authorities giving, empowering the ability to enforce what we're talking about within the downtown plan, changing divested rights to actually allow folks to do the entitlement of these properties in the manner in which we speak of. And then the application types, summary tables, these are kind of periphery things related to those zoning and land use changes, and review procedures. One of the things we've mentioned a couple of times is the incorporation of architectural guidelines for these two new districts to help preserve character. So establishing that within the text and giving it the authority and identifying your appeals processes, all of that stuff needs to happen. Dimensional standards to go with those, so Conrad and his group have the fun of writing a whole new section of text within each of those and making sure that we understand where you can and can't build and what you can and can't build, and then updating the zoning map to match, along with the non-conformities. There will be things within these districts that come back here with people requesting things to be grandfathered, and you need to have a non-conformities process. Design standards and guidelines, we need to actually have those incorporated, and again, have the authority identified within the text. So that is the meat of what's in that document that you all have seen so many times at this point. It's a lot of text, this wasn't the fun picture one, I didn't want to warn you that ahead of time, you might have gone to sleep on me, you might have anyway, hopefully you didn't, but I appreciate your time. Are there any questions on what you've seen tonight or prior, anything that I might have missed or that you'd like to see incorporated as we get this final document approved and across the finish line?
Any questions or comments?
Not much substantive to say, other than we've, I feel like we've worked with this document so much for so long, I would say it's been very thoroughly vetted, so thank you for getting it here across the finish line, and you know, beyond that, I feel like we've made lots and lots of comments at various other times along the way that we've read this document, so I'm glad to see that it finally got to its conclusion, so thank you.
So bye, thank you.
Mr. Casey.
Thanks, Dan, appreciate your hard-working effort on this. I do like the historic preservation elements of this plan, the historic core, and plus, importantly, the buildings that are going to go up, the new buildings are going to mold well and blend well with the historic buildings that we have in the community. I would like to, from the town manager, maybe get an update on that stormwater study and see where with that, and then, you know, as we focus on Main Street and we, you know, we try to do enhancements and how we try to make Main Street better, I do like that in the plan, it talks about expansion of First Street, using it for parking, using it for other economic development, I like that, and I think that could make it, you know, make it flow better within the community. I know Main Street gets a lot of traffic and a lot of pressure on a busy, not even on a, even on a slow day. And finally, I'd like to hopefully look back one day and see the successes that we've made on this plan, so when the next time we do this, we can say, wow, look at everything we've accomplished, everything we've achieved in this plan. Once again, thank you. Appreciate staff and the community for all their engagement and feedback on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this has been noted as a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on the Town of Clayton Downtown Plan, please step forward and state your name for the record. No one wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the Town Council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-09-03 and the consistency statement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of ordinance 2024-09-03 and the consistency statement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. At this time, I want to take a personal point of privilege to make a correction to the very first public hearing that was 2023-202 ANX NCRR Industrial Development. I did not open the floor for public hearing, so at this time, I would like to open the floor for public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak on that, please step forward and state your name for the All right, I didn't think we had anyone that wished to speak on that, so I'll close the public hearing and apologize for not opening a public hearing at the appropriate time. All right, up next on the agenda for public hearing will be our UDO text amendments, UDOTA
Good evening, everybody. I'm Chad Meadows with Code Right, and I don't know how to work your system. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here tonight to talk with you about UDOTA 224, our second round of amendments to the UDO. Thank you so much, awesome. All right, so I'm going to summarize these amendments very, very quickly, we'll discuss a little bit about what the Planning Board suggested on the 26th of August, also cover some of the material that we discussed on September 3rd, and if appropriate, for this body to approve the amendments this evening. So 113 changes in this omnibus set of amendments. Recall that we're doing quarterly amendments, we're packaging or bundling things as we move forward. Our intention there is to make sure that we cast the net broadly, we've also got plenty of opportunity for anybody who's affected by the UDO to come forward and suggest revisions, which has happened, and staff has honored a request before change, those have been before you. So, so far the process is working. I am not, again, going to go over any of these in great, great detail as we covered these at the work session. If you do have questions, please feel free to stop me. We have a series of five administrative or non-substantive revisions to the ordinance, not hard to imagine that we've got some minor errors for a document of this size, so basically typos, et cetera. Series of nine procedural changes, including shifting the alternative sign plan decision-making authority to Town Council rather than Town Staff, so that's one change that we've made. Performance guarantees, making some revisions there that would ask for Town Council to decide any sort of post-approval applications. If I'm doing a site plan or a subdivision, I don't include a performance guarantee request with my original application, but after construction starts, I find that I need to make that request, then in those instances, it would be Town Council who makes that, makes those decisions, okay? Finally, family subdivision. Let's talk about districts. There are a series of eight changes to the zoning districts chapter. One of the things that I'll highlight for you is inclusion of clarity about demonstrating higher-quality development, the so-called enhancements. Type 3 conditional rezonings allow applicants to request deviations from minimum standards. When they do so, there is an expectation that they will provide higher-quality development. We provide in the UDO some examples of quote-unquote enhancements, ways for them to demonstrate a higher-quality development. So far, we've incorporated things like EV parking, higher landscaping quality, better signage, better signals, et cetera. We hope to and intend to continue to grow the list of enhancements for applicants as we move forward. That's something that we've talked about in recent meetings. Series of nine proposed changes to uses, specifically vehicle towing or storage, which I would like to talk about more in a moment. Again, with the vehicle towing and storage, we've got some standards that are principal and some standards that are accessory. I'll talk about those changes when I come to some of our discussions from the 3rd of Infrastructure, three minor changes, mostly focused on clarity with respect to easements and how we do measurements. Now, the largest group of changes in this round of amendments deals with the development standards, Chapter 6. There are 25 changes to the development standards, including access and circulation, driveways, cross-access, revisions to mixed-use development, including bike lanes, parking, weather protection, more stringent standards generally for multifamily kinds of development, requirements for multifamily to have the same level of design control on all building sides, et cetera. Couple other changes with respect to non-residential development, specifically addressing design standards, simplifying provisions where that's appropriate, some minor softening to the single-family detached residential guidelines, and then finally, additional provisions allowing gravel to be used for surface parking in specific instances. Some additional minor adjustments to definitions to recognize some of the changes that we suggest. Now that's the package of amendments, I'd like to talk with you about what Planning Board said. Remember on the 26th of August that the Planning Board considered these, these applications or these revisions, and made a series of suggestions. First and foremost, that the revisions that were included with the multifamily building height limitations, when multifamilies within 100 feet of a single-family detached or single-family attached residence, Planning Board requested that that number be increased from 18 feet to a higher number, or perhaps that we do away with a height limit altogether and simply rely on a number of stories, specifically two stories. So that was a suggestion that the Planning Board made. Planning Board also suggested and encouraged us to continue with improvements to the enhancements language associated with the type 3 conditional rezoning. And then finally, that the city needs to explore further limitations on driveway entrances along arterial streets, and we will bring back to you, hopefully before the end of the year or certainly in the beginning of 2025, some additional provisions that control access and the minimum number or maximum number of driveways for developing lots on arterial streets. The intention behind that standard is to make sure that we don't interfere with our ability to widen roadways or maintain roadway capacity as new development comes online and brings new driveways with it, that complicates our ability to upgrade roadways, so we want to manage that in a more proactive fashion. So those are the adjustments from Planning Board. I'd like to talk with you about some of the amendments based on our conversation on September 3rd. So that includes the following, some of these are based on staff's reviews, some of these are based on our conversations. The first is based on a staff review. We have a neighborhood meeting requirement embedded within the UDO. When someone proposes an upzoning or a development agreement or a type 3 conditional rezoning, there's a requirement for them to conduct a neighborhood meeting. The current standards do not have a time period within which that meeting needs to be conducted. Staff is uncomfortable that somebody could have their neighborhood meeting and then file an application a year later, and so there's concern over a lengthy period of time between the mandatory neighborhood meeting and the filing of the application. And thus, the suggestion is that we establish a 60-day limit, that you need to conduct your neighborhood meeting within 60 days of you filing the application. If you have a longer period of time, if more time lapses than two months, then you'll need to conduct another neighborhood meeting prior to filing your application. So that's one suggestion that staff has proposed, just to make sure that people are aware and that, you know, we don't have somebody who does a neighborhood meeting and then goes away for a year and then files the application. Couple other clarifications, annexation petitions do not require neighborhood meetings, and we wanted to make that clarification for you guys as we move forward. The annexation procedure is set down in some summary tables, it talks about the utilization of a type 4 procedure, which has a variety of things included within it. Neighborhood meetings are indicated in that flow chart in the UDO, and staff wanted to be sure that, count that the applicant understood that a neighborhood meeting is not required for an annexation petition. You may require one, you may certainly ask the applicant to conduct a neighborhood meeting if you so choose, like any other kind of application that's filed under the UDO. Couple other things, we needed to clarify the rules regarding public notice for annexation. There are, in fact, public notification requirements for annexation, you have to publish an ad in the newspaper once not less than 10 days prior to the public hearing, where you consider that. And the current UDO is incorrect in how it frames the public notification requirements, it calls for mailed notice and posted notice, mailed notice not required, posted notice only required in cases where we don't have a newspaper of general circulation, so we've addressed those changes in the, in the public notice section of the UDO. Now, to gravel parking, one of the last changes I One of the last changes I mentioned in the, in the changes for Chapter Six, the parking lot surfacing requirements, where we've supplemented the current standards to permit the use of gravel in certain locations, for example, when property is located within or abutting a North Carolina railroad right-of-way. The initial standards called for a number fifty-seven stone, four inches thick with a geotextile fabric. Engineering has said, that's great. We also need a couple other alternatives, not least of which is an aggregate-based coarse surfacing material or an alternative subject to engineering director approval. So we've supplemented those standards with additional clarity about kinds of paving that may take place in these limited instances, parking areas within the railroad or abutting the railroad right-of-way corridor. Okay? Finally, to vehicle towing or storage. We had this conversation with, with the council at your work session. There were concerns raised about whether or not this kind of use, a use that's engaged in short-term or medium-term storage of vehicles, whether or not that was a good use of our industrial zoning district designations. Recall, these uses are currently permitted by right in both of the industrial districts. The U D O amendment sought to add this ability to do as a conditional use within the conditional commercial zoning district. Okay? Now, after discussion with staff, discussion with others, it was felt that it might not be in the best interest of the city to allow our high-quality industrial land to be used for the parking of vehicles, at least as a principal use. So what we are suggesting is a minor adjustment to the use table that would remove the ability to do vehicle towing or storage as a principal use type by right in the two industrial districts. Can I do such a use as a principal use in Clayton? Yes. The districts where that would be allowed to take place are in the conditional commercial and the conditional industrial. Okay? So there's still an option for somebody to establish this kind of use with council review and approval. That requires a site plan and your, your input. Now, I'll say one more thing. We are also suggesting that this activity continue to be permitted as a secondary use and accessory use. That's a smaller scale, smaller format, still subject to the same set of standards that we would apply to this use as a principal use, limitation on the number of vehicles that can be there, the surfacing that it needs to be located on, the screening, et cetera. All of those provisions still apply. We would also suggest that vehicle towing or storage as a secondary use be permitted in the industrial districts, provided there's a different principal use already there. Okay? So what we've done is basically allow this kind of activity as a principal use only in conditional districts and permitted it as a secondary or accessory use by right in the industrial districts. So the hope is that that will continue to allow this important use type that people need to use, but protect the, the city's industrial land that's in place now from use solely as a vehicle towing or storage facility. And that would be the request that we would put forward to you today, that we, that, you know, that be the, the approach that we take here. Slightly more nuanced, slightly more balanced, still allows it to take place, but there's some controls, some guardrails on that kind of activity. This is our town, our, our county, town council hearing on this. It would be appropriate, if you guys wish, to, to conduct a public hearing on this, allow the, any members of the public to speak. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys might have about the material that I covered, either now or after the public's had an opportunity to address you. If you so choose to adopt some of the regulations or revisions that we're suggesting tonight, then our next step will be to revise the U D O and post that on the, on the city's website. And then we will continue work on U D O T A three twenty-four, which we hope to be back before you, before the end of the year or certainly in January. And with that, I'm happy to try to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions or comments from council? All right. Mr. Sims.
I just want to talk a little bit about, just, just a comment, you know, it was, this was a long time coming for this U D O, and I'm just pleased to see that, as we said when we passed it, it's a living, breathing document. It's one that we know, realize is going to be changes, amendments, and these things like that that's needed, and hopefully, public can see that there's a process in place. We're taking it seriously. We're looking at it not just from our level, but from the planning department's level and from the planning board level to make these changes effectively as we hear the public, builders, developers, say certain things that are needed. So just want to express that I'm happy to see that the process is working.
We agree. Thank you.
Thank you. So this has been prescribed as a public hearing. I'll now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this, please step forward and say your name for the record. No one wishing to speak? I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for their discussion. Mr. Sims.
Mr. Green, I can motion that we adopt ordinance number two zero two four dash oh-nine dash oh-two.
And the consistency statement.
And the consistency. And the consistency statement. Thank you.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero nine oh-two and the consistency statement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, that pretty much does it for all of our public hearings for this evening, and I will jump down to staff reports, beginning with the town manager.
Real quick, Mr. Mayor, I just want to commend you all on two major milestones that we voted on here tonight. The downtown master plan, obviously, is going to be a big focus for us here over the coming years as we start to generate capital projects and look at some other studies that it recommended. So a lot of good work went into that. Appreciate Conrad and the team in the planning department and many before him as well that provided content and commentary for that. Also wanted to congratulate you all on your strategic plan, as Mayor mentioned and others. Next three to five years, it's going to be a wild ride. We're really excited about it. Did want to thank Deputy Manager Dolores Gill for all her hard work bringing that one over the goal line. I think that's probably been the most streamlined process we've done on any of our plans here, and very big success for us, and looking forward to see what it comes, or what comes from it. So that's it.
Town attorney? Town clerk?
No report.
Any other staff? All right, I'll now open the floor for informal discussion and public comment.
Good evening, Mayor and council and administrative staff. You noticed that I happen to be wearing a Town of Clayton shirt this evening, and the reason for that is, is that I come to you as a representative for the Town of Clayton to the Electric Cities organization, and would like to read a letter to all of you. I also have copies, which I will give to the, um, town clerk. To all, after serving as the Town of Clayton representative to the Board of Commissioners of Electric Cities, also the alternate representative to the Board of Commissioners of Electric Cities, and a rate committee member of Electric Cities over the last thirteen-plus years, I have made the decision that it is time to resign my positions as the Town of Clayton representative to the Board and Committee of Electric Cities. It has been an honor to act as the town representative to the Electric Cities Commission and Board. I have learned more about electricity than I ever thought possible, and I thank the Clayton Town Council and the Clayton Town Administrators for allowing me the opportunity to do so. I will not leave the town hanging, though, as I will stay on in these capacities at least through November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, unless you should fill my positions sooner than that date. It is imperative to continue to have a knowledgeable and active, visible individual representing the Town of Clayton on the Electric Cities Board of Commissioners. And currently, Alan Turnage, our Town of Clayton Electric Department Director, is our acting commissioner, and I sincerely hope you allow him to continue in that capacity, as he is definitely a well-qualified individual, to continue in that capacity. Whoever replaces me as the alternate should have some outstanding, I'm sorry, understanding of Electric Cities and what Electric Cities does. The Town of Clayton's relationship with Electric Cities is also very important to, to know about. It is also imperative to have a town, uh, to imperative that the Town of Clayton continues to have a representative on the Electric Cities Rate Committee. The town needs to have a voice on this committee for a number of reasons, the most important of which is to represent the town in all related rate discussions and votes. After a discussion that I had with the Electric Cities Chief Executive Officer, Roy Jones, he and I believe that the Town of Clayton Utilities and Payment Director, Anne Game, is quite knowledgeable with the rate structure currently used by Electric, Electric Cities and would be an important voice on this committee. It is our recommendation that she replace me on the rate committee. I know Anne may be wary of being on the rate committee, but I think she is the most likely and qualified prospect to take this role. The rate committee only meets four times a year unless there may be an urgent issue requiring a special meeting, and in being on that committee for about ten years, I have only had to attend one special meeting, as I recall. Again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve both the Town of Clayton and Electric Cities in the aforementioned capacities. It has truly been an honor and a privilege, and that's signed by me. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Greenus?
I don't really have a question, but I do have a few comments I'd like to make. First of all, it is no secret that you have been a tremendous supporter of the Town of Clayton in both prior elected official capacity and in your continued capacity as a representative for Electric Cities on their board and on the rate commission. And I think what is so important for the public to understand is how important this really is to the Town of Clayton. And a decade or more ago, when Bob Haylor was no longer a council member, he continued in the role, and then when Michael Greenus was council member, he continued in the role, and then after his public service, he still continued in the role, and to your point, a well over a decade of service just to Electric Cities. It's so important to the Town of Clayton that we have the right people at the table, specifically on the Electric Cities Board and the rate commission, because those decisions and discussions have a tremendous daily impact on every citizen and every utility customer that we have with the Town of Clayton. And your experience and your expertise has been tremendously appreciated by this council, by this administrative staff, and by the Town of Clayton for your good service and your works, and we thank you.
I appreciate that very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
I would also like to say that I think the recommendation of Anne Game being considered for the rate committee is perfect, and obviously, Alan Turnage continuing with our delegation there also at Electric Cities. So we'll get those into action. Anyone else?
And if she happens to give you a hard time, please give me a call.
All right.
I, I'm more than happy to maybe do a little arm twisting, so.
That's perfect. Thank you again.
Thank you all. It, it has been a very sincere pleasure to represent this town in all the capacities of which you mentioned, and even though this is a resignation letter, I have also already told Rich that I am only a phone call away, and I think as most of you know, I am happy to help in any capacity at any time. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. We appreciate you.
I put together a few Google slides, so I've asked Mr. Shelton if he could just project those here as we speak. Can you advance some for me as well, or does this do that? Okay. The white button itself will advance them. Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it. My name is Jeff Holland, and I am the president of the nonprofit My Forever Home, and so I pass out to you one of our flyers. I just wanted briefly introduce ourselves to you. I've had a chance to sit and talk with several of you in the past and was able finally to get a presentation that I wanted to bring before you, and so I'm doing that here for a few minutes tonight. We're a nonprofit organization who's committed to creating affordable housing for people with intellectual or developmental disabilities, and once those homes are set up, then as a nonprofit, we also maintain the homes, we take care of gathering the rent, but we also build community among those residents. And so we're, sometimes, as in our first project, which I'll show you, the homes are situated beside each other, but they're also in a neighborhood, so while they're enjoying the beauty of being in that community, we also work on developing relationship between the people who live in the homes in that community, so that they have community within a community. Probably about five years ago, a group of us began to meet and to talk about the ideas of bringing something like this to life. We wanted to give people with disabilities a chance to move into the community and live in homes of their own. They are certainly welcome to have roommates if they'd like to. These are not group homes. In many cases, people are even leaving group homes and getting a chance to move into the community and just to take residence there. We had a developer who took interest in this project when we approached him, and he gave us ten lots in a new neighborhood that he was building, and so those are now underway right there, just as you're approaching the Amazon plant. So when you're going down Highway seventy, you'll probably see construction that's going on. I believe they're going to call it Holt Landing. Originally, I think it was going to be Floyd Landing, but we will be setting up ten homes in that new neighborhood, and that we hope will be realized in 2025 that those homes will be constructed. Just a couple slides here, I want to show you. This is very quick. The need is great. There are so many people with disabilities who cannot afford to move into an apartment or home of their own because the amount of money that they bring in from either social security or from special assistance in home is such that it just eats up just about everything that they have. And so that's one of our purposes, is to be able to set a rent that's affordable and lets it, lets them work with the money they have coming in and still be able to have funds that they can use for other things in their lives as well, too. So we will have ownership of the homes, but we rent them out, you know, and, and are able to set an affordable rent for that. And so that's one of our purposes, is to be able to set a rent that's affordable and lets it, lets them work with the money they have coming in and still be able to have funds that they can use for other things in their lives as well, too. So we will have ownership of the homes, but we rent them out, you know, and, and are able to set an affordable rent for that. Just a couple of headlines there I thought I'd let you just see, um, here on this slide. But it's not only the pricing, but just even finding places to live. And so we are very excited to see this first project come into the, to the county and to be over that. But council, mayor, it's our heart and our desire to see this expand and to go forward and, and to be replicated again and again. We hope that, um, as developers are taking a look at Clayton, that we might find ways to have incentives that might give them a chance to look at possibly doing this with the developments they're doing. And so I bring this forward just to introduce ourselves to you so you know what we're up to and that you might be able to make recommendations, that, uh, they might reach out to us and that incentives might be coupled with that, you know, with the Town of Clayton to make that a more viable option here again for other people with disabilities. Okay, and that is it. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you for creating awareness on this. And, uh, we will take every bit of that under advisement. Thank you for the good work that you and your organization do.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. All right, I'll now turn it over to council for comments. Oh, I'm sorry. No, please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Uh, my name is John Scarpos. You probably all remember when I lived at 1304 Noose Ridge Drive in Clayton. I had no intention of speaking tonight, but I cannot remain silent in the presence of this gentleman over here, whose name he just told me, but I can't pronounce. Michael Granis.
Granis.
What a wonderful gentleman. What a, what a wonderful presentation. I never saw in my entire life a resignation so eloquently stated. What I suggest, I'd like to make a motion from the floor that we give this man a round of applause and that perhaps, Mr. Mayor, you can figure out how to make one day in Clayton his day.
There you go. We will definitely take your, um, suggestion under advisement, but without saying the round of applause is much, much, much deserved and appreciated.
And lastly, Mr. Mayor, I'd just tell you that it's such a wonderful thing to be a member of the Town of Clayton, to see that we have such dedicated people. And, uh, God bless him, and I'll bid you well. Good night.
Amen. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Uh, no one else. Uh, turn it over to council for comments. All right. Mr. Casey?
I just wanted to thank town staff, uh, the community, the Downtown Development Association for a successful second annual Clayton barbecue challenge. It was this past Saturday, had a wonderful crowd. Um, a lot of people from all over the, uh, the area coming and enjoying, uh, this, this barbecue challenge. Had 30, uh, competition teams, um, and had over 1,000 people show up. We actually ran out of barbecue at one point in time, and we were getting a little worried. Uh, fortunately, um, some people in the DDA went back to those competition teams and asked, you know, give all their barbecue up. Don't, don't hoard any of it. And it looked like everybody had a really good time and, you know, town staff, Parks and Rec Department, um, police, everybody did a phenomenal job. We just appreciate that.
Awesome. Mr. Sims?
Uh, two, two quick things. I'm going to personally, first of all, thank the chamber, uh, and Dana Wooton and her staff for the event they put on for the first responders. Uh, it was really, really outstanding. It was a, a packed event, and the awards and recognition that they gave out was not only needed, but very well done. So, uh, kudos to them. And I also want to take the time to personally thank Michael Granis, uh, from me to him, uh, personally. I literally, um, some know, some don't know. I literally would not be up here today if it was probably 15, 16, 17 years ago that he grabbed a, uh, a guy and, um, asked him to be on the downtown, uh, development board. And so started my relationship as far as in public service. Uh, I think Michael Granis is the epitome of public service, and all of us should look at it, um, as an example to what we want to try to strive for as we continue to go this road. So kudos and thank you to you.
Ms. Archer?
I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Holland, for coming out this evening. I know we had the privilege of speaking before about your mission and your organization, and I really love what you all are trying to accomplish and really promising that you have a neighborhood so close to Clayton that has embraced this and is, is working with you on that. So, um, for folks out there who might be watching, who are part of the, uh, development community, who are looking for something like this, they do have a website. It's myforeverhomenc.com. And so you can connect with Mr. Holland and his organization there. But thank you.
Perfect. Thank you both. Anyone else? All right. Hearing no further comments, I will entertain the motion to go into closed session to discuss real, uh, property and a legal matter.
Motion to go into closed session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you.